We are live.
Welcome to the organizational meeting of the Everett School Committee, Monday, January 3rd, 2022. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Cardello?
Here.
Ms. Cristiano? Mayor Di Maria?
Here.
Ms. Lambert? Mr. La Monica?
Yeah.
Mr. Mangan?
Yeah.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Present.
Ms. Sarnie?
Here.
Nine members present, we have a quorum, please stand and salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have the reading of the records from the meeting of December 20th, 2021.
I make a motion, we waive the reading and place on file.
Second the motion.
Since we have a quorum here in the room, we don't have to take a roll call on the minutes. If there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. And now I will entertain a motion to open for public comment.
So moved.
No second.
It's been moved in seconded for public comment, clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano? Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus? Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Nine, yays, we are open for public comment. Do we have anybody in the queue for public comment? Is there anybody in the room for public comment?
See you now, Madam Chairman, make a motion to close public comment?
Second the motion.
Been moved in seconded to close public comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can we recognize Ms. Diana Lewis?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, I want to say, we have our student representative here, Diana Lewis, has been with us for a while, and how could I forget you this evening? Welcome Diana, and happy new year, and happy healthy new year to everyone. And at this time, we will open up the nominations for the Chair of the School Committee for the year 2022. I relinquish the Chair at this point to Mr. La Monica in motion to vote on Jeanie Cristiano as the Chairman of the School Committee.
Second the motion.
Been moved in seconded, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. This is a voice vote by saying the name. So as your name is called for the roll, you will say the person's name. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Madam Chairman, can I un- un- Madam Chairman?
Yes.
On the motion?
Yes, Ms. Ma'am.
It's normally customary to say some nice words about the person that you know, elected as the President for the next term, and as with the School Committee, sometimes it could be two years, so I would like to just say that I started my career 30 years ago in government, and Jeanie Cristiano was the reason why. She, she vacated the Council seat in Ward 2, her and Nicholas Sayer, who was here this evening also, and they ran for alderman, and I was able to run for the empty seat in Ward 2, and so I've known Jeanie for 30 years, we're currently now neighbors for the last few years, but she's also the Commissioner of Veterans Affairs for the City of Everett. And not only she, former elected official, former City Council, now member of the School Committee, mother, wife, grandmother, patriot, true friend, her and I have had a special relationship for 30 years, special friendship, and I, she's done an unbelievable, impeccable job representing the veterans in our community, and I have a feeling, as her being here now on the School Committee, I think it's going to be one of her, her mission to, to work with the kids in the schools on patriotism, and on volunteerism, and on giving back to your community, and respecting your veterans, and, and, and I, I know that, I sense that, and I'm proud to be able to cast my vote this evening for Jeanie, and she can be spirited, I know that, so I'm sure we'll have some spirited conversations here. So that's all, Madam, Mr. Chairman, thank, I just wanted to put that on the record and congratulate Jeanie and Rich John, her husband, it's a daunting task serving, serving the Department of Government, and so I wish you well, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Cristiano.
Ms. Cardello?
Jeanie Cristiano.
Ms. Cristiano? Mayor Di Maria?
Jeanie Cristiano.
Mr. La Monica?
Jeanie Cristiano.
Mr. Mangan?
Jeanie Cristiano.
Mr. Marcus? Mr. McLaughlin?
Jeanie Cristiano.
Ms. Sarnie?
Jeanie Cristiano.
Now in the affirmative, you have elected Jeanie Cristiano, School Committee Representative from Ward 3, to be your Chairman. Congratulations, Jeanie.
Good evening. Really? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Great to see everybody here today, and tonight, rather, and I, I just wanted to thank, number one, the voters in this community for electing me to the School Committee, and then this additional honor of being School Committee Chair, it's, it's, it's truly an honor for me, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, and I promise that I'll make this proud, and, and we'll do the right thing on this School Committee. And we do have much to be proud of in our schools, we definitely do. However, we also have a lot of work ahead of us, some challenges that we have to face, so we can get to it. We can do this by all working together. I am confident that we can ensure that our schoolchildren have all the tools in the toolbox for future successes, and, and Everett, in the School Department has, has a history, we all have the Everett edge, you might have it too. However, when I was running for the School Committee, I, I learned a great deal, campaigns can be a great learning experience. I would submit to you now that we heard from the citizens of Everett during our campaigns for this office, and they should form our blueprint. Now, that doesn't mean that we can add more things to the blueprint, but it should allow us an opportunity to think about things, and go over some actions that we need to take over the next two years. And there's been some concerns, but again, there's a lot to be proud of. So I don't want to dwell too much on the challenges, but again, one, that you've talked about a lot, is, is the security of the buildings, we need to find a real solution to that, and I know we're looking in that direction. Two, our academic performance, it's critical that we keep that focused in our primary goal of this School Committee. Three is administrative organizational review, and I'll detail that in a bit. Four is budgeting, which is pretty much one of the key functions of any School Committee, and especially this School Committee. And five, cleanliness, now we've all heard about the cleanliness, so we don't have to talk about that again, okay? So in, in deference to this meeting, I'll just be very brief, one or two sentences on each topic, the schools are encountering way too many security issues, all of us have seen the, the videos and all of that, and I know the School Department is trying to address those, we need to keep it a priority, and we are still keeping it a priority. The academic performance, while MCAS scores in, the results came in in, in September, they weren't the best, and we're going to work to improve those. And we need to get to the root causes of the downside, I mean, obviously, we've had the pandemic, we have a different demographic than a lot of the different cities, now, when you look at Newton, right, they, they were hybrid almost all of the year that we were remote, am I correct in saying that? So obviously, Newton, you know, they had a, an upfront, in-person, you know, teaching opportunity, whereas our kids were remote learning, and we did the very best we could, and we were successful, but obviously, it's not the same as in the in-person learning. So again, learning should be our top priority, and, and our, our performance at, on MCAS needs to improve. In the administration, we've, we've witnessed significant growth in the number of administrators. And I am not here to tell you who we should have, how many we should have, but we have witnessed that, and there's been some concern. So we, we really should be looking for a full accounting of how many we've hired, I'm sure they're properly licensed and certified, but we, you know, we want to do a full accounting in trans, in the interest of public transparency, because there's a lot of rumors floating around, and I think we need to get to the bottom of that.
Okay.
And obviously, if we find that we have room in the administration budget, we should obviously, with the academics, you know, needing improvement, we should, if we find that there's too many administrators, we should think about, you know, shifting some of those monies back into the classroom, you know, it's one thing to be in a class at 25, it's a lot better to be in a class of 18. So that's what we're looking at, we're looking at how we can do that better. Budgeting, we need to ensure that every taxpayer dollar is spent wisely. As everyone here knows, one of the major responsibilities that we face as a committee is to oversee both the budget formation process and the ongoing expenditures of funds. Our job is to make sure that all budget-related actions are transparent to the public. Pertinent to that obligation, we will meet with all principals and members of their school councils to make sure their voices and their ideas are heard by this committee. And again, the cleanliness, it sends a very bad message when our schools are dirty, and I know we're taking steps right now to improve that cleanliness. But these messages, these subtle messages of dirty schools, they're going to stop, because we're going to, we're going to fix this, and if we need to hire back hall monitors, matrons, resource officers, attendance officers, whatever it may be, I know that's going off the deep end, not the deep end, but, you know, on the cleanliness, but we need to make sure we got all this, all the tools that the kids have in the elementary schools, and we're going to make sure it happens. So I'm a little nervous, as you can tell, you guys okay with that? So I'm looking forward to this with all the enthusiasm and devotion to doing a good job for our kids. You know, about 25 years ago, when my kids were still in the system, I became the President of the Special Education Advisory Council, and I got to tell you, it was so rewarding, and I realized that, I got a lot of gratification from that, and I know we can all get a lot of gratification from doing our best, to number one, make sure we keep the ki- the kids the top priority here, all right? And we're going to meet every challenge that comes before us, and we're going to take bows with every success. But when, where I come from in Everett, failure is not an option. Thank you, and God bless. I got to get my cheat sheet here. Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for nominations for Vice Chair.
Make a motion.
Yes, Ms. Ma'am?
I'll make a motion, Michael McLaughlin.
Second.
Second it. Can I speak?
Mr. Mangan?
I'd like, I'd like to second the, the motion of Mike McLaughlin for Vice Chair, I've known Michael many, many years, not always on the same side, as you know, but I've always respected his opinion, his tenacity, his, his will to fight for the voters and, and do what's right, and I'm sure he'll do the same thing as a member of the School Committee, and I look forward to work with him, and I wholeheartedly support you for Vice Chair person.
Jason? I'm Mr. Marcus.
Okay, thank you. Now, I just want to say a couple of things, I've known Mike for a while, I even served when I'm in the City Council, I can't remember how many years ago I've been around here so long, but he cares with his heart about things he does, he cares about the kids, and he's willing to learn about anything, anything you tell him, he'll be out the next day trying to read about it and find out what it is. He's got a good heart, he's a good guy, and he's going to be an asset to this voice, so just thank you for letting me sit.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. I have a motion in seconded, so when you vote on this, for the Vice Chair, when you vote on this, you'll say the name of the candidate that you would like to nominate. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Ms. Cardello?
Mike McLaughlin.
Mayor Di Maria?
Mike McLaughlin.
Mr. La Monica?
Mike McLaughlin.
Mr. Mangan?
Michael McLaughlin.
Mr. Marcus?
Mike McLaughlin.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. McLaughlin.
Michael McLaughlin.
Michael McLaughlin.
Ms. Sarnie?
Michael McLaughlin.
Chairwoman Cristiano?
Michael McLaughlin. Seeing that we have a unanimous vote for Michael McLaughlin to serve as a Vice Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, can you come forward? Yes, Mr. Mc, Mr. Barrows?
Madam Chair, is that possible to speak on the motion?
Yeah, well, didn't we already take the vote, though?
We did, should we, we have spoken before the vote, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the motion is made in second, and then we took the vote.
All right, so if we can speak, that, that's okay.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to say a few words?
I will be brief with my remarks, but I would like to thank my colleagues here on the School Committee for entrusting me with their vote of confidence this evening to elect me as Vice Chairman of this honorable committee. After seven, eight years on the City Council, I thought the time had come for me to move from the City Council with my good friends on that body to this, because I've always cared about our schools, I've cared about the children of our city, and I committed to put in 110% of my effort, heart and dedication into making the children of Everett shine, as they always have, as I did as a student in this school system. I look forward to working with each and every one of my colleagues, to be in, to enhance the programs, dedication, and education for the children of Everett, give them every opportunity to succeed. Not every child will go to college, but if we give them the tools to go into the workforce and to be successful, our community will be stronger and better. I didn't go to college, but I did okay in life, because I had an education from Everett. I had friends serving on this School Committee who entrusted me at that time, like Millie Codillo, to be able to follow her lead. Mayor Di Maria, who's been a, a friend and role model, although we've agreed and disagreed throughout the years, we've always been on mutual ground to be able to find a common benefit for Everett. I want to thank my parents, who are at home watching this evening, I want to thank my family, my friends, individuals who've given me their dedication and commitment to helping me throughout my years, whether I made a good decision or a bad decision, I've always done what I thought was right for the city, and I'll do no less as a member of the School Committee. So this evening, I want to thank my colleagues, thank you Superintendent, I want to thank my friend, Madam Chairwoman Cristiano, I look forward to working together as one team, there is no I in team, I will not allow that to happen as a member of this body, and I look forward to working collaboratively, building the bridge with City Hall, good friends like John Burley and others, who I will be able to work closely with to ensure that we work for one cause, and that's for the City of Everett's benefit. Thank you this evening for your vote of trust and confidence in me.
No. At this time, I will administer the oath of, oath of the Secretary, administer the oath to the Secretary of this, of the Schools, Secretary, no, oath of Secretary to the Superintendent. I usually can read, not tonight, though. If you could stand and raise your right hand, it's the first time I've ever done this, I'm excited. So state your name, I do solemnly swear.
I, Priya Tillyani, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As Secretary of the Everett Committee to the best of my abilities.
As Secretary to the Everett Committee to the best of my abilities.
And understandably, agreeably to the rules and regulations.
And understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations.
You said it better than me. Of the Everett School Committee.
Of the Everett School Committee.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth en masse.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth en masse.
And ordinances of the City of Everett.
And ordinances of the City of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was fun. At this time, I take a, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the rules of the Everett School Committee. Now, before we adopt the rules, I will let you know that in speaking with some members, they like to see some, a few things changed, but for now, let's, let's adopt the rules that we have now, and when we have proposals for changes, we will certainly submit them to this body. So again, I take a.
I'll make a motion to adopt the rules for the School Committee.
Second.
Is that a roll call vote, Mr. O'Connor? Roll call vote.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Chairwoman Cristiano?
Yes. Okay, so we, so we have proposed, we have adopted the rules of the Everett School Committee, just to let you know, for those of you that are interested in certain subcommittees, please feel free to email me or call me, expressing your interest, so we're going to lay that over to our next meeting, so that we can, you know, point at that point, and I'll let you, I'll, I'll let everybody know, okay? Yes.
Madam Chairwoman, will you be emailing us a list of the, the committees as these, the standing committees that we have now, so that everybody can look at it and see, okay, and then we will just email them back to you? Is that how you want us to do it?
Absolutely, yeah, that would be great, okay?
So you, I know that, it says on here that we should do that, we never do it on the first meeting because of this reason, we have to pick them, but if you want to do it legally, we can postpone it to the next meeting.
Okay, let's postpone it to the next meeting then.
Postpone it to the next meeting, so that, that's in a form of a motion, and then we're clear to get back to you.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, oh, was that your job, Mr. O'Connor? Okay, I don't want to take anybody's job away. Okay, and before we get back to the regular order of business, I want to let everybody know that we're going to be following rules and regulations of the School Committee, and they may change, but we will be following rules and regulations. We'll also be following Robert's Rules of Order, okay? So if you're going to rise on a point of personal privilege, you better read this book, because I've read it, you know, I got a lot of time on my hands, I guess, but I've read most of it more than once, so I encourage all of you to read it, so that, you know, you don't, I don't want to embarrass you, but I will, if I have to, not that I would. Okay, so, next, and we already did the public comment, and we're going to lay the report of the Superintendent to our next meeting, okay?
I'll make a motion to lay over the report of Superintendent to the next meeting?
Second the motion.
All those in favor? The ayes have it, oh, all those opposed? Oh, the ayes have it, okay. Items submitted by School Committee, oh, is that what you're supposed to read? All right, get with it.
So we do not have, I'll read the items, but we don't have any items under the next few, so roman numeral six is items submitted by School Committee members, seven is subcommittee reports, we do have, under roman numeral eight, bills and payrolls this evening.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we accept the report of the School, School Committee summary dated December 30th, $1,138,124.92, that's in a formal motion.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded to approve the bills and payrolls in the amount of? Roll call vote, Mr. O'Connor?
No, the next one.
Next one is.
The next one is?
Yeah.
All right. You're supposed to tell me.
All in favor.
Make a motion to pay bills.
What?
Just stay all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it?
I'll make a motion to pay bills in the counts for $1,000,000. I'll make a motion to pay bills in the counts for $1,138,124.92.
Second a motion.
Second. Roll call. Now roll call.
Roll call vote, please, Mr. O'Connor. Hey, I'll take all the help I can get.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Mangan.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus. Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Chairwoman Cristiano.
Yes.
Okay, we have passed bills and payrolls. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So we have no other items under Roman numeral nine unfinished business, Roman numeral 10 new business, Roman numeral 11 hearings, and no matters for executive session under Roman numeral 12.
Thank you, Superintendent. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madam, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Chairwoman on the motion. I believe we need to set the date for the next School Committee meeting because it is, the next meeting will be January 17th, which is Matthew Luther King Day. And we need to do it the following day.
It's already in the rules.
So automatically be the 18th? Fantastic.
I'll make a motion for adjournment. A motion is made, seconded. A roll call vote.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Mangan.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus. Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Chairwoman Cristiano.
Yes.
You've adjourned this meeting. Thank you and God bless. I'll do better. I was just a little nervous.